You okay? Can you, uh, do your roll call?
Mr. Valori?
Here.
Mr. Kariffi?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Ms. Graniani?
Present.
Mr. Peluso?
Present.
Others present: Mayor James O'Barbario, Ellen M. Saman, the Business Administrator, John Inglisino, Esquire Township Attorney, Ann McOochie, our CFO, Khalid Madden, our Township Clerk. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the Township, for the regular Township Council Meeting of February 16th, 2016.
Statement of Compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 17th, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 22nd, 2015, and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 24th, 2015, and was forwarded by fax to the local newspapers and local radio stations on December 17th, 2015. No council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cable Vision Public Access Channel 21 at 11 o'clock a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipity.net.
Okay, ordinances, second readings, and public hearings. Ordinance 2016:01. Any questions or concerns concerning that? Okay, the status of the adopted ordinances, none. Discussions and reminders. Mayor? Ellen?
Not at this time, but when we get, when we get to pieces of, that are on the agenda, yes. But I think Ann has quite a number of good news things with regard to finance.
Great, wonderful.
I have something to add, Council President.
Okay, great.
The Municipal Pilgrim Pipeline meetings have been taking place with multiple communities. I've been representing Parcipity at these meetings and also, information has been copied to our Township Attorney and also to the Administration. Right now, they're asking us to do an inventory review of environmental impacts that our municipality would have if the Pilgrim Oil Pipeline was eroded through Parcipity. That's all I have, thank you.
On that same topic, I met with Mr. Dalsky, who is very up-to-date and knowledgeable on this pipeline subject, and we forwarded some information in reference to, and ordinance that we'd like to propose to the Council and had discussions with Mr. Inglisino on it, and a ordinance is in the process, if not drawn up already, for the Council to take action.
We'd like to see it as early as possible.
Yeah, I have, just to follow up on that, Councilman Kariffi did approach me and asked if, if we would work with Mr. Dalsky to prepare an ordinance, and so, per Councilman Kariffi's request and at his direction, we've worked and of course, the Mayor is supportive of this as well. We've worked with Mr. Dalsky, who's met with my colleague, Justin Marqueta, a couple times, and I've been keeping in the loop with Justin. We have a working draft of an ordinance that I think at least, there's still a little bit of work to be done on it, there's some fine tuning to be done, but I think next week, we'll be ready to recommend that that ordinance be introduced by title only. We anticipate that we will have a full, complete draft of the ordinance next week for, for distribution, subject to back and forth with Mr. Dalsky, and certainly if, if any Councilman, you know, wants to have some input on that with us, they're certainly welcome to do so.
And John, is there any of, any other information out there concerning, you know, your views or anybody else's views from other towns of, you know, what's gonna go, go on with this particular pipeline?
I've conferred, most recently with Mayor Harris in Chatham Borough, who I also know has been very active in the group of towns, and also, I represent Floren Park, not as the Municipal Attorney, but as the Planning Board Attorney, the Low Income Housing Attorney, and also Special Litigation Counsel, and I know they've participated as, as well, and, you know, some of the issues that are being looked at concern frankly, what, what the process is going to be. It's gonna be at the DEP, there's some, some legislation that may put this before the BPU, there's issues about whether or not there would be a forum for municipal or other objectors to even participate in, and so, we're looking at, at those issues as far as the, as part of the process going forward. We're also looking at ways in which we can regulate that would withstand constitutional scrutiny. It's easy to just say, we're gonna pass this ordinance, as we did as an interim measure, as you did as an interim measure, banning all pipelines, but, you know, you have to, we, that was always intended to be an interim measure ordinance, and you want to be able to reflect on a lot of those constitutional issues that are raised to make sure that, you know, if you're gonna have an outright ban, is it constitutional? What is the, the, the structure that you wouldn't wanna put into place to build in safeguards in, in areas in town? If a pipeline's gonna go in, is it better to regulate or just prohibit? You know, those are the kinds of issues that, that we've been wrestling with, and, and the ordinance I think you're gonna find is, is, is very comprehensive, I think is very thoughtful, and frankly, I think it's, from what I've seen out there, it'll, it'll be the, the leading ordinance of, of, of all the municipalities. And so, you know, we'll do that, and certainly, as time goes on and more issues are raised, if we can improve upon the ordinance, we'll, we'll do that, but I think we wanna, you know, stay ahead of the curve, sort of have a state-of-the-art ordinance on the books that protects your interests. Mr. Dalsky's been invaluable as a, as a resource and a reference, and frankly, his commitment, his energy, his perseverance, his knowledge has been greatly appreciated, you know, by our office, and I think has really been a tremendous public service to, to people who are joined in the cause of, of wanting to, you know, severely restrict or prohibit the, the pipeline project, which at this point, I guess is not technically a project, but what we, what we perceive will be a project. So I did wanna recognize Mr. Dalsky, I, I say that because he's been interfacing with our office, so I've been getting firsthand knowledge and reporting on his abilities. He's not a member of the bar, so I haven't offered him a job, but if he, if he goes to law school and takes the bar, I think he would be a very good candidate for...
Now, regards to the legal process, if things kinda don't go our way, is there an appeal process that the town could go through to bring to order? How, how would that work out?
Well, we're not really sure at this point what, what the process is, is, is going to be, whether it's gonna be BPU, DEP, looks like DEP. We don't know with DEP whether or not it's gonna be a process that's going to permit, you know, objectors to be heard, but if there's a decision made by an administrative agency that someone wants to contest, then the legal process is to appeal from that directly to the Appellate Division.
Okay.
So there's a, you know, there's a legal mechanism to, to contest a filed determination by an administrative agency.
Okay.
So, so that's always a possibility, but I, I think we're, as I understand it, no application has even been filed yet, so we're, we're really sort of still at the very preliminary stages of, of, of this from a, from a proceeding standpoint.
Okay, thank you very much. Scheduled meetings?
Before we do that, if it, if, at this time, because of the nature of some of the things that Ann would like to speak to, could we take it out of order?
Of course, for you anything.
Thank you. Thank you. The finance, as you know, is a busy time for us, and but we have some good news. Our collection rate so far preliminarily is 99.28%.
Nice.
A great collection rate here. The other thing...
Just tell them one day.
What's that? Oh, yeah. Just yesterday, we collected online a million dollars, online payments. So we encourage online payments.
Great.
Terrific. The way we do our online payments, it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. It's a very small fee actually that we do pay for them, and it's unlimited amount of transactions. Some of them are where they have to pay, each individual has to pay a certain fee. We don't have that here at the town, so it's a convenience for anyone who just wants to go online, they can look at their bills as well as pay their sewer water and tax bills online, so feel free to look at that and give us a call.
Question for you in regards to online payment. Is that the most we ever received at one time?
Um, not really. I think it's about equal. We had that happen the last quarter as well, about a million dollars in one day, it was like, whoa.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so just beginning to get to that level.
Okay.
And I actually knew something had happened because Terry, our tax collector, there was loud noises coming out of...
Okay, great.
Because the money was coming in the right hand.
Yes.
Yeah, he gets very excited, as excited as a person in that capacity.
Yes, right, as a tax collector.
The other thing we did do, the net debt, the statement for the annual debt statement is due, it was due yesterday, and we have, net debt is .918%. We're allowed to go to 3%, so it's very good, and we'll be working on the bands, as you know, the notes, and really looking at the capital and where we stand, especially in the sewer, so we're going to see a, a change in that number, it'll be coming down a bit.
I, I know that you obviously have such a, an interest in what you do. Can you kind of explain to the public a little bit how that works out with that?
Yes. What happens is that every year, we have to, you'll see a report, as a matter of fact, I'll post it up on the, on the, on the website tomorrow. It just goes through all the notes and all the authorized debt. I mean, not necessarily what was borrowed, but what was authorized, so regardless of whether we borrowed the money, that number went to ordinances, becomes, I guess, kind of reserved there, and it goes against the town's debt ratio.
Okay.
So what that means is that we have a, about, well, it also adds in the school, which is a whole nother animal, and it takes the equalized valuation of the assessed value of the town, the average over the last three years, and the interesting thing about that number is simply taking the total debt and dividing it by the assessed valuation of the town, and if you know what's gone on with the valuation of the town, it's gone down over the years, so therefore, your debt ratio goes up, similar to taxes, so that number will also move in a positive direction based on the fact that we will have a positive increase, for a change, an increase in our average valuation, thanks to Danny.
Okay, great.
So we have, that's basically what that is. I mean, if anybody ever has questions, you can come see me, but it is important when it comes to our rating, and the rating agencies look favorably on something like this.
And real quickly, what's our rating as of this time?
Double A.
Okay.
And as we said, we're making a commitment for a triple A within, you know, within the very foreseeable future.
All right, great.
What I would like to say with regard to the sewer, there will be, as we committed to the people that came out to last year's budget, that we are, and had a very good budget meeting with our sewer folks, and there's debt there that we will either be paying off some significant amount of debt or reducing the amount of debt authorized.
Okay.
And you're gonna see a very posi, positive in the sense of going down, so that, that number of what we could actually borrow will be raised, however, we're, we're, we're really reviewing our documents to make sure that this is a project that is still warranted. You know, in five years' time with technology...
Yes.
You know, for example, we talked about, you know, the incinerator, we talked about electric, you know, going from burning something to possibly making money off of, you know, producing the energy on grids and stuff like that, so we're excited about the direction that's gonna go in, so I think the, the people will be pleased, and the people that monitor some of our, closely monitor some of our, you know, debt service will see that. We're, we're doing our homework and reviewing that.
Yes, yeah, because we're already starting our budget process early, much earlier than last year, so we'll be scheduling the budget hearings in March, I believe, and also, I, I'm going to ask some of you, the Finance Committee, to schedule, we would like to schedule something, I would guess, at the end of February.
Loretta's telling me earlier she's looking forward to it.
She is, come on!
Yes.
We were real pumped the other day. Also, I wanna introduce Patty Reiki. She's going to be our Assistant CFO.
Hi, how are you?
I'm so excited! Hey! It took a long time, and she comes from Roxbury, she's already the Assistant there, it's, Roxbury's a big town, we had to find someone, a lot of the applicants come from very tiny towns, a lot of them were very limited as to what they did. She has the CFO license...
Great.
Which is huge for me and, and for the town, and I think I'm very excited about her starting, we all are, and she has a, a cheering...
Yes, I didn't introduce.
Yeah, well, Marie Global is here, she worked, she was CFO for Danville and worked for Ellen for many years, and I don't remember your name, I'm sorry.
I worked for Ellen too.
Yes, we all worked for Ellen! There is, there is zero degrees...
Yeah, no, no, what, what I wanted to say is, you know, when we came, Patty said she couldn't get her family out, you did bring your family, and, and again, that's a very important thing for this Council to know and for our public to know. When we say family, and Aunt, and Marie knows where I'm going with this, we are a family, and that's why we can pick up a phone and call someone that may be retired or may be still working or, and I have to tell you, one of the compliments that Patty gets is that, not that they wanted to get rid of her, but they were very supportive of saying, you take the next step, you know, go and, 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 and grow, so...
My references were my current Township Administrator, my current CFO, and my current Chief of Police.
That meant a lot to me, that she told them that she was interviewing, she told them in advance, like I did.
From day, from day one, they knew everything I was doing. Part of why I'm not started yet was I told Ann, Roxbury Township just took on jumping over payroll systems and, um, do payroll over there.
Okay.
And it's, I would've left them high and dry, and I couldn't do that.
And we were very supportive of that.
Great.
And was very supportive and understanding.
When will, when will she be starting here?
16th, but who's counting?
February 16th.
Great.
And she would've come in, but the Saturday that she was gonna come in was, we had a little snow, so...
Explained all those Saturday and Sunday.
Yes, that's right, we did, we did.
Yes.
That's us, yeah, we couldn't get here, but that's okay, but I'm...
She said, what are our hours? I said, seven days a week, 24/7, so...
This is the A-team over there.
Yes, the A-team, yeah.
And welcome.
Yes, so thank you.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yes. Ellen, any other good news?
Just happy to be here, Lou.
Thank you, I am so happy that you're here.
No, actu, actually, when we get to...
I knew you had something else to say.
Notice I come back. When we come, when we do the, the first resolution, I know it's a, a resolution, you know, that will be voted on next meeting, but I have Dean Snook here, so I don't wanna take it out of order, but that's, I'd like to just, if you have any questions on our shared service, which you did, you did know, I copy, you know, Mountain Lakes is on board, and we're very excited about that.
Great news, yeah.
So I, I asked, or Dean said, he'd love to come out, so we have some very good news in that regard too, so...
Okay, great. Any other questions before I move on? Okay, the scheduled meetings will be February 16th at 7:30 p.m., that will be the regular meeting. The following meeting will be on March 1st.
That was cute.
That will be at 7:30, that will be the Agenda Meeting. Minutes for approval, none. Administration bids, nothing?
No, just, no, no.
Okay. Quotations, proposals, and qualifications received, have none, and requested, none. The following are the ordinances, if you could take a few moments to go over them, if you have any questions or concerns about these ordinances?
I do. Oh, yeah. None.
Okay. Resolutions for non-consent agenda, if you could take a moment to read over them, that's Resolution 2015-040 and Resolution 2015-018. Questions or concerns? Okay, and then we have a list of following resolutions. If you have any question, concerns, please bring them forward, take a few moments to look over them again.
And, and as, as they're doing that, if I could ask Dean, I was, I think I changed it up a little bit, Dean, if you just wanna come to the microphone and talk to, talk to this a little bit, and I think you could share the good news about, I believe, the fact that we have a medical director and, and things are good.
Great.
I found that out a few minutes ago, so... Can I take this out of here? I have to wander around and, and look at everybody, so I apologize, nor am I back to you. Thank you, everybody, for just giving me the quick opportunity. As we go forward, anybody up here will tell you, for those of you that don't know me, I'm a forward thinker, so we're right by like exit 40, 280, if I'm going west, I'm already thinking about what's happening in Roxbury, so that's just where my brain is all the time. With that in mind, with public safety on the EMS side being my role, one of the things that I've looked at over the last couple of years is where we're helping out some of the other communities, because Parcipity is very unique in that we have a lot of emergency services that we can offer to our residents and visitors, as well as kind of be the, the big brother, big sister that helps out some of the smaller communities around us. So, long story short, the mutually agreed with Mountain Lakes that's on tonight's agenda for the first resolution basically takes into account just the aspects of what our role would be responding to Mountain Lakes, whether it would be just because they need another ambulance, because they have a multitude of medical calls in their town, or if there was an MCI, which is a mass casualty incident, like, God forbid, a bus accident or something, or maybe something more serious, like an active shooter situation or something like that, and I hate to bring it up, but unfortunately, it's one of those things, as we go forward, we always have to consider, you know, what's out there, what's going on right now. So this agreement basically puts in all those fancy words that the folks up here like, whereas is this and that, as for this, and, you know, blah, 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 as I'll refer to it, not to make light of it, but it just brings that into light, and we're excited as we go forward that we can support our community with a little bit more formal and, and better service, because I'm always a firm believer that even though we're doing a good job, we can always do a better job, and we can also help some of the communities around us, you know, with making Parcipity our priority, but in with our priorities, I mean, anybody up here knows, to go to Rainbow Lakes, you have to go through Mountain Lakes, so, you know, just as an example, we traverse other towns on a regular basis just to get to parts of our town, so it only makes sense, if we can offer a service to help out, we do, and, you know, always forward think.
The medical director, because, just talk a little bit about the vision.
So, in conjunction with that, one of our mandates as a New Jersey licensed emergency medical services provider is to have a medical director. We have one in place, what's through some contracts with a couple of the local hospitals, and one of the things that I had brought to Ellen and ultimately the Mayor, and which will be coming to the Council once the paperwork gets in line, because Ellen just got some good news tonight, is that I wanted to get a medical director in place, a physician, who has an EMS background, an emergency medicine background, and somebody who's local. So we have that gentleman actually in line, we got the go-ahead today, the green light for the insurance coverage, and it'll be, it'll be great, because it'll allow us to kind of be an up-and-coming EMS agency here in 2016, and get all the protocols that New Jersey is slowly but surely allowing, the BLS, the Basic Life Support, your local ambulance service to provide, get them to the forefront while keeping it in-house, and he will also be a, a, a resource for us as an agency, as well as different things within a town for training and stuff like that, so, to be continued, there'll be more information on that.
But we just got the news tonight, I did talk with Larry Graham of our Joint Insurance Fund, and I said, would this be something that you could cover for his, the liability, because as the teacher, he still, you know, people, you know, will ask who's, you know, and it's covered under the, under, no, in, in part, as part of regular coverage, so there's no additional cost to the town, but it's, but he's covered, and we're really happy with, with that.
Like I said, I did just find that out, so I didn't have a speech prepared on that one.
You're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
And this is something that we talked about with regard to, at the last, again, the last budget meeting, that...
Absolutely.
That this was gonna be something that's gonna be growing, and although we have, this is the first of many mutual agreements that we're gonna be working on other towns, that we, that Dean has already reached out to, so...
Absolutely.
I just wanted to share that news since that resolution was on tonight, and, and I was gonna ask Dean to come back next, next meeting, so...
Thank you again.
If you had any other questions, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns regards to the other resolutions in place here? Okay, the Township Office reports, Mr. Kariffi, if you could read the engineering reports? I appreciate, thanks.
Engineering report, February 2016, Manor Lake Dam. Our design professional met with the NJDEP to review their latest comments. They are not, they are not major, but do require additional calculations and plan revisions. They are also reviewed by the NJDEPs, wetland concerns, which are minor in nature, and will resubmit all requested information by the end of February, no council action required. FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Project elevation work on phases four, five, and six is on hold until the weather improves. We are still making process, process, or progress? Progress, I would say. Should be progress on the acquisition of two properties that are being funded by the FEMA and the Morris County Flood Mitigation Grants. An ordinance authorizing the acquisitions is on the agenda for adoption. An ordinance will need to be adopted by the Township Council.
Okay.
You wanna have that added to our agenda?
Yes.
Lake Precipity dike repairs, the construction of the dike repairs has been completed, no council action required. ISSO, performance guarantee release, block 725, lots eight, nine, and 10, a developer completed all site work in accordance with the approval plans, inspections were made during the course of construction, and the office has no objection to the release of the performance bond. Resolution will need to be adopted by the township council. So that'll need to be added.
Yeah, that'll have to be added also.
745 Route 46, investors, performance guarantee release, block 722, lot 10, a developer completed all site work in accordance with the approved plans, inspections were made during the course of construction, and this office has no objection to the release of the performance bond. Resolution will need to be adopted by the township council for that as well.
That'll be to be added also. Okay, the chief CFO, any information that you want to put out?
No, I believe I've talked pretty much.
Sure.
Never.
Okay. John, any information?
I have one matter for closed session.
Okay. We'll go to close now, want me to read that off?
It's your pleasure as to whether or not you want to open, the public can go close or go close now, it's up to you.
This is not something we're voting on tonight.
No, it's not anything.
Then I prefer to go to the end.
Okay.
Do public first.
Okay, we'll do that then. Okay, before we go to the public, any reports from our committees, from the officers here?
I have, last week, we had a recreation committee meeting, and Jimmy Walsh reported that the, the work is moving along on the new multi-use field at Smithfield, and, weather permitting, I believe he said probably the end of May.
End of May.
Should be completed.
So all that work will be finally done?
If all the weather works out.
That's, that's great news. Great news, okay.
And remember, it came under budget, we got all the three additional elements that we wanted, and he thinks we're going to have, you know, be under budget too, on time and under budget. Unusual for a municipality, but.
Which is great, and we saved a lot of money by doing a lot of the work ourselves too.
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay, wonderful news. Any other reports from the committees here? No? Okay, applications, well, excuse me, communications or correspondence? None. Applications, 2016 renewal of licenses, number three, and the, we'll go, I'd like to entertain a motion for the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Who would like to come forward, you have five minutes, just please sign in, state your name and address. Anybody want to come up from the public?
as fast as I can. Still getting complaints regarding the Bank America parking on Hawkins Avenue. It's still not easy and accessible off of North Beverick, making a right-hand turn into Hawkins, and it's not that, the visibility is a problem also. It's a health and safety issue, guys, you know, really, seriously, health and safety.
What times of day is that?
This is in the morning. You can be up there at eight o'clock in the morning, and it's like at seven o'clock.
We'll follow up afterwards, what you have to say.
Yeah, please. Rob, has Driscoll gotten back to you?
Yes, he did, I'll be returning his phone call shortly.
Okay. And just a status on the response from the better resolution, if there's anything new on that. The assistant CFO, I don't know if we've ever had one before, if we have, I don't know about it, but what would the salary be with this, please? And two very important things. One, I'll go through first. I'd like to know the status of the Karifi reimbursement. I've been sitting in this ordinance, this audience, and I have watched two resolutions passed by the council to reimburse Mr. Karifi's attorney. Ellen, I'm going to address this to you. I want to know if this has been done. If not, Ellen, can you advise me who is telling you not to reimburse and not to recognize the council's vote to pay as a resident and as a taxpayer, who's footing part of this bill? This is getting, it's deplorable to me, really is, and I need answers on it, I really do, because this is just too ridiculous. Okay. We have a problem when we let businesses encroach into residential areas. I have three pictures here, I'm going to show you them, I'll pass them to Loretta first, you're very familiar with this area. This is the Bank of America, no, I'm sorry, this is the, no, Bank of America, I talked about, this is the Bella Rosa dental, that was allowed to purchase the commercial piece of property as well as the residential piece of property. After the storm, Broadway, parking lot completely plowed. This hydrant is on the residential piece of property that is owned by them. She is well aware that it is her responsibility to do this. I called the township Monday, I spoke with Ellen, I advised her, as a homeowner, it's a health and safety issue to all the neighbors who have to feed off of that hydrant.
Pat, you have two minutes.
It seems to be more important that she makes her money and doesn't care about anybody else. I want to know, what happened? I called Ellen Monday, I called Michelle Tuesday, Michelle said she was going to take care of it. I called Michelle Wednesday, Michelle said, my God, I asked the police to show up there. Well, you know what, thank God we had sun. Okay, this has not been done. This has not been done. My question, my most important question is, if something had happened to me or any one of my neighbors that day, or two days later, three days later, a fire in our homes, and the delay, because this fire hydrant was not cleared out, who do I sue? The township for ignoring a resident's phone call advising of a health and safety issue? The dental office for being ignorant of the ordinances of the towns, which is not ignorant enough, because at a board of adjustment meeting, she was told that is her responsibility. Okay? So, please, enlighten me, I need answers tonight.
Pat, 30 seconds.
I need answers, and I'm going to stand here, and I would hope you can give me those answers. I specifically want the answers on Mr. Karifi's case and the Bella Rosa property. Please, somebody give me some insight tonight.
Well, let me handle the Bella Rosa.
All right, let me, okay, your time's up, so if, we can go in an orderly manner here to try to answer some of the questions and concerns.
The Bella, I mean, obviously, the council's not in a position to advise you on that.
That's why I said I addressed it to Ellen.
Well, we're certainly not going to advise you to sue the township, so, you know, which is what you were suggesting, so I would suggest that in light of your comment, that it would not be appropriate to, to respond.
I didn't say, I said, who, as a resident?
Since you initiated the concept of suing the township, I do not think it would be appropriate to address that.
I did not say sue the township, I said, who could be sued? That was what I said. Who could be sued?
Given my.
The township? And the dental office, or what? Who could be sued?
Anybody can be sued, but I don't, in light of your.
That's why I gave the question to Ellen, and I want, I would like Ellen to reply to both of those questions.
Well, just, I would just suggest for the legal part of that, who could be sued? If, John, if that was the answer, I would go with that answer, and then I know there's other parts to your other questions, I don't know if you wanted to get into any of those other details.
Can I, can I, so then I can't answer on the hydrant? You're suggesting that I don't answer on the hydrant?
No, just as far as what the town did, as far as, did they do, did they respond to a resident? And what was, you know, I mean.
I already told, told you what happened to me.
Yeah, to you, I know.
Yeah, you certainly respond to what hap, whether or not there was a response to.
Whether or not they were fined, whether or not, whatever, because a normal resident would be fined, and if there were any fines given out, I'd like to know about this year.
I think, I think I can answer this.
Okay.
Without step, you know, okay, because I know, you, okay, I heard how you meant it, so.
Yes.
And that's why you addressed it. Okay, as soon as you called me the first time, when I, when I got it, I called the Department of Public Works, and I actually got the director, I said, Greg, I know it's late, later in the day, by the time I got, you know, all the few other things going on in my office, and he said, I will go out and I will look at it. The very next day, I asked him, how did you make out? He said, I didn't get to do it. So I said, okay, let me know how you make out today. I never, when the sun, then the sun came out, I had heard you called, I was disappointed that I didn't get anything back from him, however, he knows how serious it was the second time I said, please, you know, I said, if you're going to offer to do it, please do it, and again, I, he's very good, he's, he was busy, I know he wound up shoveling because he had some, some issues with some of the men not showing up, but anyway, that being said, I will find out tomorrow what he then did with regard to a summons and what he did do, because I'm sure he did speak to them the second time, I just didn't get a chance to follow up with it, so that is what, that was out of my office, and I don't know whether Michelle also spoke to him, but.
I know Michelle told me, by the time I talked to her Wednesday, that, oh, they can't give her a fine now.
Well.
I think you can.
I will speak with the superintendent, and I'm sure he went out the second time and saw it, and even if we had to give him, give her some help, because of the nature of that length, you know, the distance there, you know, we might have, because of the essence of, the importance of safety first, and.
Well, I think the plowing people that she hires could have done it too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and how about the Karifi?
And on that one, I don't have any response to that. I mean, I don't think it's on my watch, so I, I don't, I don't believe, I've not been directed on anything, so.
No, two resolutions were sent, sent in, that's a direction, isn't it? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm asking. That's a direction from the council to you, right?
Not necessarily.
Okay, so my interpretation of that would be that the council voted, they okayed it, and it's being blocked by administration, not specifically, not specifically you? And I would suggest that then, the viable person here would be the mayor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
We're wasting our money.
Thank you, Pat. I'd just like to direct the municipal clerk, can you please look into the two ordinances that she referenced, and please gather documentation and backup, and give us a determination as to why it's not being honored? Thank you.
Well, let me just, that, that's not the role of the municipal clerk. The municipal clerk doesn't report back as to why the administration isn't doing something.
I didn't ask that, I said.
You said as to why it's not being honored, that's exactly what you said, so that's, I'm just telling you that that's.
What the status is, how's that?
Well, again, the municipal clerk doesn't report on the status of administrative matters. If you would like an answer from the administration on administrative matter, then you must obviously direct your question to the administration, not to the clerk. It's not a fair position to put the clerk in, because it's not the function of the clerk.
The clerk can gather the information and find out about the vote that evening, and about the information that was taken and discussed at the council meeting, because I don't see minutes yet. So I'd like to see the minutes from that meeting then. How's that?
Well, I would suggest, if, worst-case scenario, reach out to the mayor offline, there were burial, and then maybe we might be able to come to some type of, you know, conclusion or answers to it. Hello there?
I'm patient. I'm back. Ten and a half days ago.
If you could state, I know everybody in the public here would love to know your name and where you live, so if you could state your name and where you live.
Beverly Casper, Normandy Village.
Welcome, Beverly.
You're not going to like welcoming.
I have rhino skin, please.
Don't smile at me today, please. Ten and a half days ago, we had almost a storm in a century. I'm going to start off by thanking the town people who worked very hard to clean the streets as best they could, a police dispatcher named Linda, who stuck with me all day Sunday and made sure that I was rescued. I also have to thank a young man named Nick, who that weekend did almost 50 hydrants, 25 driveways and sidewalks, changed a tire, pushed four cars out, and I haven't seen him for an update, and he isn't here this evening. For one young man to do all that is unusual. He had me cleaned out by 10:30, and I was so happy, because it was soft snow, it, I was, I could go where I was supposed to be Sunday morning. About 12:30, I heard a sound come down the street, and I knew what that sound was, and one of the town trucks going at the speed, and I know they have to go fast, but not that fast, locked me in with ice. So at 7:30 on Sunday morning, I was trapped. I called the road department, I left messages. I called the police department, and Linda said, that is terrible, I will call the road, and I will also call the fire chief. As of 5 o'clock this afternoon, no one has called Linda back or the police department, either from the fire department or from the road. I discussed that with Greg Snyder, he's going to be addressing it, it was his problem. But the problem seems to be selective enforcement. This afternoon, at the senior center, the three of us from Normandy Village were talking. One man had paid $250 to get his driveway and sidewalk cleared. Another person, well, I paid, the third person did his driveway, but not his walk. The gentleman who paid the $250 said, why didn't you do the walk? And the person smiled and said, what for? They're not enforcing it, why should I do it? So I took a ride around town. Selective enforcement is not being done. Businesses are not clearing out their hydrants. Here are the photographs, ladies and gentlemen. I only had a limited time to get the pictures taken and processed, as you see, they are dated today or the 30th. This, as the lady was saying here, is deplorable. Not only are individuals not doing anything, but the businesses. Now, we're going to have a rainstorm, and it's going to be a mess, because the way it's been done, and of course, people also put snow in the street, which meant that Monday night, after this, after the snow being thrown in the street, it had melted, but by Monday night, it was slippery going home. We cannot tolerate any longer selective enforcement. Now, you know how I feel about my fire hydrant. I would like to have it removed from my properties, in a bad spot, it's on that turn. You've heard me come time and time again, but I'm not going to be address, I'm passing these pictures.
You could pass them down to the clerk, so he checks them in?
These are the photographs taken today and the 30th. These are the ones taken, and you can see the problems we have. The lady was talking about suing. You know, when you have people trapped, and also, at that time, there were a great number of telephone calls made to the road department by seniors. Greg told me this. I asked Greg today, how many of those calls were returned? I wasn't, my calls weren't returned, you have an obligation. These seniors, not just me, these residents deserve to have a call returned. It's common courtesy. Now, how many times have I come here and talked about, and I would love to use expletives?
Two minutes.
Pardon?
Two minutes.
Don't time me.
You have two minutes left.
Well, you going to come over and stop me?
Unfortunately, you have two minutes.
What is going on is dangerous to the people in this town. How are the fire trucks or the EMS people going to get to individuals? It has to be addressed. It isn't a matter of love thy neighbor, it's a matter of responsibility for the residents of the town, regardless of who they are or how you feel about them. I have been coming, this is my third year, this time it got out of hand, when even a healthcare facility didn't, didn't clear their fire hydrant. What are you going to do about it? You're going to do something, aren't you? I come, I come here, and you smile at me, and you listen to me, and you tell me how nice I'm doing, but you're doing nothing. That fire hydrant is not mine, it belongs to the neighborhood. The house next door to me had a fire, and that young man is under 50 years of age, he has a snow thrower, I don't care if he likes me or not. There is a responsibility for each other that I think is getting lost. Maybe that's what the other lady was alluding to. You don't have to love thy neighbor, you don't even have to like your neighbor. You have common good, and selective enforcement of these ordinances has got to stop. There is a fine.
Thirty seconds.
You have pictures of houses there, you know where those neighborhoods are. When I spoke to the police department about the situation, they said, well, maybe we should ring bells and remind people. Five days after the storm, it's now 10 and a half days after the storm. These, these sidewalks have still not been cleared. When are they? Are you counting on, or are these people counting for the rain to wash it away? The situation, gentlemen, has gotten out of hand, oh, I'm sorry, gentleman or lady, has gotten out of hand, it's deplorable. I'm calling it selective enforcement. You can't decide which of the ordinances you're going to enforce. The police department is to enforce all of them, and you are to back them.
Your time is up.
I have 34 pictures of what the neighborhoods look like. I don't know if you want to see them.
Yeah, if you could pass them down, that'd be great. Yes, thank you.
If I may counsel president.
Anybody have any questions for me?
Yeah, we'll let the mayor's get a response.
Excuse me?
He's going to respond back.
Beverly, there's no selective enforcement, there's no selective enforcement number one. The men were out 24/7. I know you thanked them, but you also said that they plowed you in at the same time, so, but before, before I get on to, you know, we worked that storm to a T. It was a difficult storm, 30 inches of snow came down pretty darn hard over that, that period of time. Everybody at one point was trapped in. I almost got stuck on the road on several attempts, and the only reason why I left it, because I didn't want nobody to come and have to dig me out, especially the workers. That being said, we didn't selectively enforce, we received so many phone calls that sidewalks were unshovelled. We sent the police to these areas, we told them to remove the snow, and some people did, some didn't. Yes, we're going to have to enforce the rules, and we're going to have to summons individuals. We tried not to do it this storm, it was the first storm of the season, but it was a big storm. It was 30 inches of snow that came down, but I do, one thing I want to say, and I told you this, it wasn't selective enforcement. You can't say it's selective enforcement when that's not the case. The case is this, you, you got to speak for your five minutes, let me please finish. I watched how those individuals worked in our town. I know for a fact how many of the police officers went to certain houses to tell them to shovel the sidewalks, because the school-aged children have to walk to the schools. We did all that, but this is the big town, but yes, in the future, the only way that I know that you're going to be able to not have to dig your fire hydrant out, or anybody, is the ordinance would have to be changed. And I agree with you. I mean, I helped my neighbors, I wish your neighbors would help you. I don't know if they do or don't, I don't want to get into a neighborly fight with your neighbors, and that's what I don't want to do. But the fact of the matter is, our ordinance is our ordinance, and we can't have every town worker shovel every air, every sidewalk, every area, because if we do it for you, which I wish we could do it, we'd have to do it for everybody in this entire town, and then, we don't have the manpower to do that.
But it was done.
Where do you put 30 inches of snow when you bring a plow? There's no, and I'm not fighting with you and arguing, but I'm saying, when you get that kind of snow, it's just, there's nowhere to put it.
But I did, I did my own walk, because it was only now, and I did it, I did it by doing. But I did my own walk, because it was only now, and I did it by doing layers. Seven layers for each Mr. shovel. I did it to the sidewalk. When it got there, it was from the tail, and it was ice, and it happened to me once.
And what I'm trying to say to you is, though, that was a significant amount of snow. When you get that kind of snow, just trying to move it, it gets to a point where, you know, do we continue to move it? Do we wait a few more hours? Because we were getting nowhere at one point, because the snow was coming down so fast and so heavy. And the fact of the matter is, these guys were out 24/7. And they need to take a rest at some point. But we were on it. I mean, we went to residents' houses, and, you know, they shoveled out the ones that we went to. But we didn't get to everybody's houses, I'll tell you that much. There was no possible way we'd get to everybody's houses.
And I have photographs with the date on it, that the fire hydrant on your business property wasn't done. Now, I can't...
And that's fine, and we'll take care of that.
Okay. You don't have to state it.
I saw the pictures.
Unfortunately, I don't have, I didn't have the timestamp.
Right.
But it takes me, it took me a lot of time.
And the only reason I'm saying what I'm saying is, I know how hard the blue-collar workers worked that day, the Saturday, and then going into the Sunday. And they worked very hard. They had to go, you know, they had to finish up in certain areas because it was so much snow.
This is how they replowed me, and it had been cleared.
But what I'm saying to you is, they're not doing it on purpose.
I had been cleared.
They're not doing it on purpose, though.
I had been cleared.
These guys would never do it on purpose.
But I was cleared.
Okay.
Just because it came from the street and had the salt in the water, froze, was frozen when it hit, it was an intolerable situation.
And there's a lot of individuals like that in town, but I feel bad for you. The fact of the matter is that I can't send every guy out to every household.
I understand that, but I was trapped.
I can't do it.
Okay.
I didn't ask. I just called. I said I didn't get a return call.
All right.
I never said nobody changed it cleanly.
All right.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public like to come forward? Please sign in, you can state your...
Ken Dolsky, 21, Winfield Drive.
Can you sign in also?
Yes.
Thanks.
I'd just like to thank the town council for everything that you're doing in helping us fight this pipeline. First of all, I want to say to John that it was an absolute pleasure working with Justin. We're not done yet, and it was great to have somebody ask you for input and then sit down and listen to what you had to say and actually take what you had to say and use it. So I was very happy with the way that process, well, the way the process is working. I think we're going to have a great ordinance, and we're anxious to not only get it passed, but we want to use it with every other town that's on the route. So thanks very much. And also to Mr. Peluso, who's been attending the elected officials' meetings that have been hosted by Mayor Harris. Thank you very much. Obviously, not every town, even though every town has been approached, not every town is just able, or is, I can't even explain why they wouldn't, but not every town is sending people there, even if it's just to learn what's going on and understand what they're facing and what the options are. So thank you, thank you very much. Just as a really quick, brief addition to what we're doing against the pipeline. So as you know, they filed in New York. We're waiting for them to file in New Jersey. The Coalition Against the Pilgrim Pipeline/Ciera Club has hired Princeton Hydro, an engineering firm out of Princeton, that is, has a lot of expertise in these matters, and they are going to work the BPU process and hold the BPU's feet to the fire. No, excuse, not the BPU, the DEP. Hold the DEP's feet to the fire. And while we're not really optimistic that the DEP is going to protect us, we're going to make sure that at least they go through everything that they have to and that it's done professionally, it's done accurately, and this company will ensure that that happens. We're also reaching out to legislative officials where we need to. We're reaching out to the federal officials to make, to go to the Army Corps of Engineers and make sure that they do as full an environmental review and assessment as possible. The fact that we have all the towns on board from their resolutions that we worked on last year means that, you know, we have a lot of access to them. And the one town, or I should say, the one county that is a problem at this point is Bergen County. Bergen County gave Pilgrim permission to survey last year because they were afraid that they were going to get sued. And although nobody's ever been sued by this company for not allowing permission to survey...
You have two minutes.
They let them survey, and we're trying to get them to rescind. So Bergen County, of all the counties, has been the most recalcitrant and the hardest to deal with when it comes to protecting ourselves. And they have a lot to lose. They've got the Ramapo Reservation. Mawa has its wellheads. There's a lot going on there. So the only black hole, I would say, in this whole thing is that we're concerned about Pilgrim trying to get eminent domain power, and we're trying to talk to some attorneys and figure out what they might do and how we might counter it. But otherwise, I think we are working every single angle that we possibly can. And so let me just say once again, thank you very much. Everybody on this council has been really great to work with in this effort. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you could sign in and state your name.
Can I sign in at the end? Is that cool?
You could do that too, yes.
Okay, cool. I'm not that tall. Katie Cassidy, 7 Stephen Terrace in Parsippany. I have a bunch of questions, so I'll ask my questions, and then you guys can answer at the end. So I've been looking at the website, and I have noticed that there are more minutes up than the last time I checked, so I'd like to thank whoever is responsible for that. I do want to know who specifically is the person who is responsible for the minutes that are missing? Who is responsible for uploading the minutes? Who is responsible for updating the schedule for all of the committees? Who is responsible for updating the committee pages? And then I would like to know who also is specifically accountable for the transparency portion of the website. I'd also like to have a timeframe from you guys under which point all of the minutes will be available to the public on the website. I did go to the library recently because I thought maybe if the minutes aren't online, maybe I could find them in hard copy. While from a while ago until 1948 is very organized and put in binders in order and everything, anything after 19, it was either 1948 or 1943, is stuck in file folders haphazardly with no ability to really go through it. I offered to organize everything and hole-punch it if they had the supplies and everything, but obviously, that wasn't on their agenda for the day. So those questions. And then I'd like to switch over, as some of you may know, I'm a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee now, and I do want to know if the council has any intention of asking the committee to advise on the issue of the pipeline, or if they have asked the committee to advise on the Manor Lake Dam, as the NJDEP has concerns with regards to wetlands. I know that they were noted as minor, but concerns environmentally, nonetheless, I would think you might want to reach out to the committee that you have at your disposal. I also wanted to ask you if the master plan has been changed since I was here and Mr. Snikus gave that nice presentation over there with the board. I think that was the end of 2014. And then my, the final thing that I have for you guys tonight, I'm not sure if you guys know, but on the website, underneath the committees list, the municipal government transparency committee is not listed, which I think is a bit of an oversight, particularly being as it's a transparency thing. So those are my questions. If you have questions about what my questions were, I'm right here.
Okay, you're all done asking questions?
Yes, I'm all done.
Okay.
Let's take a couple of them first, if we can. Okay. With regard to the minutes and the keeping of minutes, that is the responsibility of the clerk. We have a new acting clerk who is working to get the minutes up to date, and so that's being worked on. Certainly, with regard to minutes going forward, that is the acting clerk's responsibility. With regard to the website in general, with the FER administration in terms of who maintains the website and, you know, the various specific information regarding the website that you referenced, that's an administrative function. With regard to the master plan, the adoption of the master plan is a function of the planning board. It's not a function of governing body, so it's better addressed to the planning board, although both Mayor and Councilman Valori sit on the planning board, and they may be in a position to answer your question. With regard to the environmental committee, specifically relative to the Manor Lake Dam project, that's a project that's been going on for quite some time, and I don't think that it would necessarily be a useful exercise to involve a committee of sorts in that project at this point. There's been years of interaction between the Township's Engineering Department and DEP, as well as input from the local community. So the local community has had input into this project, and as was reported on by Council Carruthon earlier, we're really at the tail end of that process. Typically, the environmental commissions serve the role of reviewing applications before the planning boards and the boards of adjustment and commenting with regard to local environmental concerns that folks on the commission would have. Most of that is based on the fact that members of the local commission will have local knowledge of environmental conditions that may not be readily apparent to members of the board, may not even be readily apparent to board professionals that are going to be reviewing applications. There are, in communities that are fortunate enough, will have members on the environmental commission who work in professions in which they have a particular area of expertise, in which they can lend a hand, you know, to assisting in reviewing applications. And also, there are members of environmental commissions in many municipalities who have a wealth of historical knowledge that, with regard to environmental matters, that may be affected by certain applications. And that really is the primary role of the environmental commission. Certainly, as you suggest, I think, in terms of master planning and things of that nature, it's not uncommon for planning boards to involve environmental commissions in the process of master plan reviews, you know, and that sort of thing. With regard to municipal projects, it's less common, although I'm not saying that circumstances wouldn't lend themselves, to, you know, volunteer commission involvements. You know, typically, on those types of projects, you know, they're sort of handled through the DEP and the town's engineering department and/or, you know, consulting engineers. I hope that was, with a couple of things out there that needed to be filled in, but I hope that responds to most, if not all, of your questions.
Oh, just one fill-in, John. It's a environmental advisory committee, not a commission. Big difference.
Yeah, it, yes, you're correct. Thank you for pointing that out, Councilman Camaro. So it's an advisory, it's an advisory board or committee in nature. It doesn't have powers. Some towns call them commissions, some call them committees, and there's perceptions about some differences between the two. But the bottom line is, they're advisory in nature, and they're called upon primarily with regard to applications that come before the planning board or board of adjustment.
And I have a little bit more time left. I'm pretty sure, probably like a minute and a half.
You could do a follow-up.
Okay. As I wanted to know then, with the, because I believe if I read the ordinance correctly, that the advisory committee is called on to advise at the behest of the council. And so I want to know if the council would be interested, or is going, is the council going to ask for an advisement from this committee in regard to the Waterview project as the application comes in?
To answer that question, I'm the liaison for the committee. I did bring that matter to their attention last year, and I've asked them to engage in it. They've had a number of people that left the committee, and they have not been able to have regular meetings, nor can they have a quorum to decide upon anything either. We are filling those positions, you know, so hopefully, that can maybe up and running. You are made aware of the next meeting coming up, and we hope to see you there. And another individual that was asked to join as well. So, you know, hopefully, they will be able to, you know, formally get together and make a decision on what they need to do based upon our recommendations.
Well, but the council... What usually happens with committees with regards to you being advisory, the committee being advisory, is when there's an application that's sent to either the planning or zoning board, if I'm not mistaken, they send information to various boards, one being Historical Preservation Committee and the Environmental Committee. If I'm staying corrected, I could be wrong, because it's been a while ago, I'm almost positive they, when Waterview, because I know you're targeting Waterview, when Waterview was, they also got the application on Waterview during the planning board hearing. So, and that would usually be done by the chairwoman of the committee. So when you have your first meeting...
I actually did have a chance to speak with her about it, and she said that she was not called in to speak, and she had to wait in line with the public and only was given three minutes then to speak, like everybody else in the public, which is why I ask.
What I would maybe suggest or recommend also is, you know, attending a planning board meeting, speaking to the chairman of, obviously, the planning board, and also meeting with the engineer, Mr. Snikus, and he might be able to give you some follow-up on that also.
So with regard to Waterview in particular, it would not be appropriate for the council to...
On the state in general.
...to involve itself in Waterview insofar as, with respect to any planning board application that is filed. The council has settled its matter with Waterview.
Yes.
And frankly, when an application is submitted to the planning board, the council and no member of the council should participate, other than Mr. Valori, who's a member of the board, the mayor, who's a member of the board. But again, it would not be uncommon for, and it seemed to be, to be a very appropriate use of the committee to review, whether it be plans submitted on Waterview or any other plan before the planning board, as I indicated, and to offer comment. Typically, environmental commissions and other committees will, you know, write memos, providing their overview of the project and offering recommendations and the like. And that's an appropriate function of the committee.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Nick Homiak, Lake Puyallawatha. I'd like to see the environmental advisory committee advise the town on the benefits of the regional master plan and what we're missing out. I think they couldn't educate us enough about that. But I remember during the Waterview, the, anyone from the committee wasn't allowed, and when they, when we started the conformance, the planning board mentioned that they would seek some feedback from the environmental committee. I believe this was in September 2009, and there was no such correspondence or relationship between the prospect of us, the benefits we would have had in conformance as opposed to out of conformance. For example, the RD lawsuit and the promise of the open space. I would say there is selective enforcement of ordinances in Parsippany, and to use an act of God like a snowstorm is not the best example. And I would, we had this ordinance passed, I believe, last year. It's in Article 6 to 354-34 about the people dumping their household and business garbages, trash up on North Beverick or wherever in the town. That is ongoing. It still happens all the time. Those guys emptied their cans, and the same addresses, same locations are full of household and business garbage. And once again, the addresses are right there. I spoke to a police officer the other day. He says, "Oh, yeah, they're saying that you actually have to see somebody doing it." No, you don't. If the proof is in the thing, and these people should be fined, given a wake-up call. We have food waste in Parsippany. We have food waste in Precipiny, it doesn't go down there in Lake Hiawatha, it doesn't go in proper containers, it goes in plastic bags, they're laying the sidewalks, it gets breached. I happened to be in Riverdale not too long ago for a matter, and they have this in their town hall, a big poster, your litter, your storm water, your storm drain, your water. I'd never seen anything like that in Precipiny. I mean, it's like kitty stuff, we all should know it. But there is an ordinance supposedly that the people, the community, if it really exists at all, is supposed to keep the storm drains clean. And that never happens. There's a storm drain committee that's inactive, it doesn't do anything, but that should become part of criteria for, is it possible at all in this modern age to keep up with the plastic waste? Is it even, is it possible at all? But we, here's another...
Nick, two minutes.
Okay, here's another poster I saw. Your litter in the street, you might as well litter in the river. Now, we talk about the Pilgrim Pipeline, well, plastic is a derivative of petroleum. It's a form of an oil spill. And I'd like to say one thing, and to credit Ken over here with his work on the Pilgrim Pipeline, it's not really a utility, you don't have to give in to these people. And I had a small conversation where, when Ken got his award at the Clean Water Conference or whatever down there in South Jersey. Anyway, State Senator Raymond Lisniak said, and he's an expert, he's from Linden, where there's more pipelines than anywhere, and he said the Pilgrim Pipeline is totally useless to New Jersey. All it is is a thoroughfare for the petroleum companies to pump their stuff out to a port somewhere so they can make money. So it serves New Jersey or any community it goes through, not one iota. So don't be fooled by anything this Pilgrim Pipeline is throwing at you. And I'd like to give you this to put it up in the town hall somewhere because...
Could pass it down to Mr. Inglisino?
Thank you, Mr. Counsel President.
Just want to follow up. Ellen, in regards to, I know Nick is obviously so dedicated to keeping, obviously, the public, you know, safe and, you know, with pollution control and everything else that goes along with it. Do we have like a, like almost like a status report of like enforcement, like almost like a, like when a police officer's on patrol, they do a daily activity report? Is there some type of maybe report that we could generate, like, you know, bi-weekly, so when we have our meetings, we could say, there was 100 complaints, 75 were enforced, somebody got summoned, not to say you're naming them, but...
Mr. Counsel President, can I make a comment on that? I wanted to make a comment before, and I think it's appropriate to make it. There's ordinances on the books, and I'm not at all condoning any activity that violates an ordinance, but understand that whether it's ordinances at the local level or regulations at the state level with regard to DEP, there are ordinances there to regulate behavior, but they're there really to encourage compliance. They certainly can be punitive. If you violate an ordinance, you can be punished. But, you know, the goal is not to punish people. The goal of the ordinance is to encourage compliance. And so many times, what happens in practical application in these instances is, you know, there are violations, but there are circumstances, many times, that, you know, manifest themselves that result in those violations. Classic example, 30 inches of snow. Somebody may be in technical compliance, and so there's judgment calls that have to be made on the administrative level as to, you know, under the circumstances, are we getting compliance? Or are we not getting compliance, and do we need to invoke the punitive measures of an ordinance as, what many people would say, as a last resort, you know, to get compliance? And I think what happens a lot of times is folks think, and I understand why, they'll say, well, if somebody's in violation of an ordinance, you know, there should be a punishment, black and white. And in the real world of whether it's local government again, or the DEP and state government, you know, that's really not the way it works. And so I think rather than a report, I think the thing to do is to take a look at some of these issues administratively and determine where there are, you know, sort of compliance challenges, and then figure out plans on how to get the best compliance as possible with the ordinances, realizing that as a last resort, there are punitive measures there to enforce compliance. But for obvious reasons, you know, municipal government is not going to want to, you know, fine people for, you know, one technical, you know, so there are some judgment calls that have to be made. But again, the goal is compliance, and I think, you know, the administration will have to discuss, consultation with the council, sort of, where there is non-compliance and how is compliance achieved, realizing that the punitive measures of an ordinance, i.e. a fine, is certainly a mechanism and in many instances, a last resort to be the ultimate means of enforcing compliance. So I just think that it has to be looked at in that kind of way.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest, we know there's certain areas in town, there's hot spots.
Yeah, and I have a response to that. There can be hot spots, and I get Nick's copy, he copies Greg, and they do go out and clean it up, but again, it's not supposed to be Nick's job. Many, many months ago now, because time does go very quickly, we thought we had a compliance officer, we thought we had the recycling guy, and we said, great news, now we'll have somebody that we described and said, this man, well, man or woman, will be somebody that knows they're not above, you know, get gloves on, and I want you in the garbage, and then I want you to make sure you go and have, go to the schools and talk about, you know, recycling and garbage and all that. The gentleman did not take the position, and then, as luck would have it, we were able to, we researched, we went out again, and someone from in-house who has an interest, and we just finally hired that person, you know, promoted that person. I met with him and Greg and what you're talking about, the compliance and the, you know, the carrot before the stick. We didn't have that person, I mean, we didn't have the person. Now we have that person, and we said, you're going to take this from cradle to grave, you're going to be out there, you're going to be, you're going to be functioning and doing all the good work that Nick has done, and if you need to learn from somebody, Nick can show you the way, how to easily go through a peaks and get the mail, it's right there. So I mean, I know that, and the gentleman was so excited about getting this position that he said, no, I'm down on for everything. He said, I want to do that, I want to, you know, I want to go out into the community, I want to go to the community center, I want to do classes, and he'll be going...
And when's this gonna start, Ellen?
He, we just did it, we signed him up for the classes to become a certified recycling coordinator. So, but he'll also be some assistance to Greg in a sense, I'll call it a white collar type thing where he's administrative, so we'll now have someone that's going to track it. He said, you've got a big job on your hands.
That's gonna be important, absolutely.
So that's gonna be, that talks to what our labor, I mean, our attorney was talking about, but we couldn't get there, and I'm so happy that the timing was right, that now we have somebody, and now we can put those things in place.
So we're gonna start making some progress with it now?
Yes, yeah, and, you know, it just, there was, there's a lot of things happening here, a lot of changes, but we're knocking them down, we're hitting them, we're going after them.
Yeah, and sometimes...
Can you share the name of the person with us?
Yeah, what's his name?
Chad.
Chad.
Chad's last name.
And not Jeremy, Chad.
Yeah, somebody's that.
Sorry, Chad.
Okay, we'll have to get his name.
We'll have his name, you'll have it by tomorrow.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Valori Massman, Tendrum Drive. I just want to, Dan is one of the best employees we have in this town, and it just shows you that he's stuck around here tonight. Too many other people who work for this town come in, they give their presentation or whatever, and they split. Thank you, sir.
Dean.
Dean, I'm sorry, Dean.
We knew what you meant.
Yeah.
It's okay, but Dean's...
No, 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 I can't believe I made that mistake. Probably because I was just getting lomiscabobulated here. Mr. Inglisino, like 50% of the time, I don't agree with you. We spend a lot of money on ordinances, they have to be enforced. Because I'll give you an example. Why have miles per hour signs up? So you're saying that police officers shouldn't give people tickets if they're doing 45 and a 25? Don't answer me. You know, you and I don't agree on much. Lot of bullets here. I'm going to start with last, the January 19th meeting. I'd still like to see a setup that the public could tour the sewer treatment plant. It should be a sign-up list because there's just so many people you could take. Another thing that gentleman said, he made a real big mistake, he was talking about the age of his employees down there. He ain't no youngster. And I hope we're training somebody, because nobody here has a contract with God, nobody. And there should be a lot of cross-training. So I took it a little, you know, not offensive to me, but I don't know who he's referring to. Kevin Ryan, I'm still very upset that Kevin Ryan went to Rich Rosenthal's house and he didn't give you, Ellen, a written report so the public could either Oprah it or get their hands on it. And in addition to that, let's think about, ladies and gentlemen, what's happened in Flint, Michigan. There's a gentleman in this room that said they all should go to jail. I think those people should be executed, because they're executing people indirectly. Everybody knows I'm not to the right, I'm just right. All this stuff here, I gotta go fast. This has nothing to do with you guys, but I want to pass it down, because a lot of people didn't get it in town.
The Flyers, the Teachers Association, Dean, you're a resident. I need that back though. I can't believe, I called up Mike Peterwitz this morning at 7:00. Oh, shoot, I need to turn it on.
Dean will help you. Boy, that's Khalid.
Dean's back there, I can't. The Flyer, so I called up Mike Peterwitz, one of the greatest guys, I wish he was still a board member. They put his name on that list as a board member. I know he's not happy. He hasn't gotten back to me yet, but I pictured it. This thing, I had to go over and pay for fire inspection thing. So I went over with cash, I couldn't pay here, I had to go over there. Thank God I did. You gotta see this. Not only do we have property tax reimbursement in this state, we will repair a person's house, even if they only live in the house for one year. You can't make this stuff up. This makes Bernie Sanders look like a capitalist.
I was gonna say, give that to John.
Do I want it passed down? I need it back. Well, he'll say something, it's state law. Next thing. What's this resolution, when I sit down, regarding Meadowbrook Gardens, Brook, Meadowbrook Gardens apartments?
Well, you got two minutes.
You gotta be kidding me.
Well, you know, you should have showed Mike.
All right, there's nothing, there's nothing on the, all right, there's nothing on the, it's never been on this since I brought it up, the Glacier Hills sidewalks. Please read the Precipiny Life Opinion. This young man is right on the money about immigration. It was the January 27th. There's no police at these meetings, Lou? I guess because you still carry a gun? That's fantastic, because they should be out in the street. There's no need to be police officers here. Pat already asked a question about this Assistant CFO. I'm totally in agreement with, Pat brought up about James Kariffi, his unused vacation time and the legal fees, enough's enough. And I think the residents of this town should get an accountability of what the legal cost has been for Mr. Inglisino's firm and the other firms associated with this whole abortion. Snow plowing was very bad this year. First time I ever got calls in my 20, almost 25 years in this town. It was, got a lot of calls, people were not happy, and we all know why, 12 guys didn't show up. And I think I'm done. But I do want an answer about that Meadowbrook.
That's a settlement, garbage settlement, the way we've been doing with all of the apartment complexes.
You mean, it's a tax appeal?
No, well, because we were...
All that, that's all, okay.
We were successful, that's why you forgot.
Well, because they're not out here anymore. I know you're gonna, Dan, Dean, you know, I know. Because we used to get resolutions out here, right? Hey, did the groundhog come out today?
Actually, yes, yes.
Okay, all right, so does that mean, short winter?
Early spring.
It was supposed to be short winter.
Anybody else coming forward? I'd just like to use a little slice of time, I just want to... What was that? Even if this is gonna say something to the public, all right, okay. I'll entertain a motion to close this portion of the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Grignani, second by Mr. Kariffi. Roll call.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes. Just a few moments, I just wanted to mention a few things. In regards to, it was brought to my attention, and I don't know if it was in the works or not, are we gonna be working on anything with a plot for...
Yeah, John Fox.
For John Fox?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we're in the process of working on that? Okay, great. Any other questions, concerns? Okay. We're going to move to our closed session.
This will be a closed session specifically to discuss the Fair Share Housing Council lawsuit against Precipiny and RD Realty.
Closed session resolution, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in circumstances, and whereas the township councils of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the township council wishes to discuss some things that Mr. Inglisino stated, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the township council of the township of Precipiny Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion made by myself.
Second.
Taken by Mr. Valori.
Roll call.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Make a motion to reconvene?
Second.
Second.